Called June 1st, meeting of the High County Board of Commissioners to order. To welcome everyone here and their joining us on Facebook Live. We intend this here in the meeting room is Commissioner Shannon Swindell, Mr. Earl Pugh, Commissioner Benjamin Simmons, County Manager Chris Noble, Attorney Franz Holsher, Clerk to the Board Lois Stokesbury, IT Person Donnie Shoemake, and members of the audience. And join us by teleconference is Commissioner Tom Paul from Ocracoke. Are there any others joining the meeting besides those? Okay. I'm going to ask Commissioner Simmons if he would lead us in prayer.
He will please bow. Lord, I and we come to unite and we just ask for healing in our country and all the unrest and all the uncertainty that everyone's been through in the last several months. Oh, we just need your help. And we just ask that you heal our nation, help our leaders to make good decisions that we might live in peace. And Lord, just be with us tonight and help us to make good decisions for the residents of Hyde County. And Lord, we just ask for protection over all the peoples as they travel home tonight. And Lord, again, I just don't know what to ask, but just for help and healing for our country. We are thankful for all the blessings that you give us in Christ's name and pray. Amen.
Let's stand, let's lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic whose it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an agenda before you and I believe we have a revised agenda. And I believe things highlighted in yellow is that in the revisions. All right, under items to consider, we've added a project budget ordinance, NCORR state grant assistance amendment to project budget ordinance, R-NCORR temporary cash assistance, and under number eight, provided to consider carriage grants officer or airport. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? Here none, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Have a motion to hear second. The motion was by Commissioner Swindell, second by Commissioner Simmons. All those in favor, let them say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Commissioner Toppin, who's just come in, welcome. James. All right, we have the minutes for the May 4th regular meeting before you. Are there corrections to those minutes? I think there are. Believe on page one, line six. I wrote something down, let me see if I can find it. I'm sorry. Under these minutes on page six, line 646. 646.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to confuse you. We talked about this just before the meeting.
Right.
When I talked to Chris and Ms. Lois before this meeting, I thought we pretty much confirmed that your May 4th meeting was recessed to June 1st, which is different than what I said five minutes ago. So if that's accurate, then these minutes would be correct as far as when it was recessed to the May 4th meeting to June 1st. But I wasn't here, so I don't know. But I just wanted to relate that conversation I had with Chris and Ms. Lois.
Okay, well, then maybe I was.
And the May 14th was a specially called meeting that was recessed to May 28th.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, that's not a correction here. Are there any other corrections to the minutes or any corrections to the minutes? Here none, all those, is there a motion to approve the minutes as written? Have a motion by Commissioner Simmons, do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Swindell, is there any discussion? No, all those in favor, let them say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Now, we have the minutes from the May 14th. Believe on the first page, line six, that says May 4th. I see that should be May 14th. Am I correct on that? Because that is the May 14th meeting.
If that is in fact the case, Attorney Holsher, would line one need to be revised just to say special call meeting minutes?
I think so. If what we shared together last week is accurate, that would be a special call meeting on the May 14th instead of reconvene regular meeting.
So on line five, that should be?
May 14th instead of May 4th, sir?
Yeah, that's on line six, but you say.
Well, yeah, actually in line one, actually, even in line one, it says reconvene regular meeting in the title, not to get caught up on.
Yeah, I think your title would be specially called meeting minutes. And in line one, instead of reconvene, it would be specially called meeting if.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What we talked about last week is accurate.
And then on line six, it would be Monday, May 14th.
Okay.
And then that should make them all.
Right.
Correct. Just those three small changes, Ms. Lois, and I marked those in my book.
Are there any other? And I believe at the end, the May 28th meeting was canceled. Is that?
That's something you were talking about before the meeting began at the end about whether or not the May 14th was adjourned or not. You could have a clerk's note or something in there that says the May 14th meeting that was recessed to May 28th was not held because the May 28th meeting was canceled. And I can give it to Ms. Lois to give her.
Yes, sir. That is, that's the language block at the bottom of the meeting minutes where she certified that the recessed special meeting on Thursday, May 28th was canceled. And she attests to that and that she remained in the government center until the time the meeting was supposed to open. It's in the block.
Right.
If that is the decision.
Okay. Are there any other corrections to the May 14th meeting minutes? Here none? A motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
By Commissioner Swindell, who was the second? Commissioner, second by Commissioner, okay, Commissioner, second by Commissioner Paul. Are there any other discussion? No, all those in favor, a motion, let it be known, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right. This meeting, did we reconvene? We just reconvened in the public hearing on flood containment, is that right?
That is correct, sir.
All right, do I hear a motion to reconvene the public hearing on the High County flood damage prevention ordinance? Have a motion by Commissioner Simmons, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Swindell, all those in favor, reconvened in the flood ordinance meeting, let it be known, say aye.
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 Opposed, this public hearing on the High County flood damage prevention ordinance is not open. Are there any comments from, do we have any comments from the public or any comments, written comments on this?
Donnie, have you received any written public comment in regard to the flood ordinance? Ms. Stokesbury, have you received any public comment?
So we have received no public comment from this particular time. We did however, get to take a significant amount of public comment and Commissioner Paul can attest to this during the early stages of ordinance development as we worked with the Ocracoke Planning Board particularly on this issue to get to a place where we felt comfortable with the flood ordinance itself. As you know, on June 19th of this month, our flood maps will become effective, our FEMA approved flood maps will become effective. And our county has the reserves of right to put a special flood damage prevention ordinance in place to add to any requirements under those maps. And if you'll remember, the new FEMA flood maps significantly lower the elevation required to build in a great majority of the Hyde County's landmass. So we have came together to do a special flood damage prevention ordinance that addresses that issue. And I think that Tom, Commissioner Paul, last time we met on this, we were not satisfied with the language in regard to Ocracoke and the differentiation between residential properties and non-residential properties. And we were actually able to meet with state officials and revise the flood ordinance to reflect a residential requirement of nine foot and then a non-residential requirement of seven and a half. The mainland.
You go.
Yes, sir. The mainland requirement.
No, go ahead. I just want to comment, I just want to comment on that, but go ahead.
Yes, sir. The mainland requirement stayed the same. And with that, that does conclude my comments. So I will ask you, Commissioner Paul, for any comments that you have.
Sure, I just, I just want to say that the, that the recommendation of the nine foot came about with, as you said, with considerable public input, including two meetings of the planning board and a lot of conversation. And so I feel very comfortable with that, setting the, setting the elevation, the required elevation at nine feet. And when we did that, despite the amount of public input and conversation that we had, we did not address the issue of the impact of that nine foot elevation requirement on commercial structures. And that was brought to my attention later on by a couple of people with businesses on the island and asked if there was a possibility of differentiating between commercial and residential structures. And as Chris said, we set up a meeting with the FEMA folks from Raleigh who were very helpful. And we were able to determine that it was okay to make that differentiation between commercial and residential uses. Whereas initially, we had thought that that wasn't a possibility. And I believe at our last meeting, I might have even said that it wasn't, that we were not able to do that. But following that meeting with the folks, the FEMA folks from Raleigh and specific conversation with them about what we had in mind, it turns out that their concern about that was they thought that perhaps we were going to differentiate between different types of commercial uses. And once we explained that it was going to be for all commercial uses versus all residential uses, then they were very comfortable with it. And they said, sure, go ahead and do that. And that's what we've done. The reason for that is that any commercial use on the island that is considering elevating their house or elevating their building or building new, if they were required to build at that nine foot height, the additional requirement for handicap ramps would be in some cases prohibitive, not just in terms of cost, but also in terms of the amount of square feet that it takes to do that. And some of those businesses just simply don't have that square footage that would be required. So, excuse me, we were, we were very happy to, to have that conversation with the FEMA folks from Raleigh and to sort that out and to put that into the ordinance at those elevations. I would suggest on page seven, where it delineates those elevation requirements, under, it's actually under the definition section. It's talking about regulatory flood protection elevation. The first three items in that section all refer to the mainland and only the last one refers to Ocracoke Island. And I would suggest that we revise that wording to make that clear. Because what it says is in AE zones, the regulatory flood protection elevation is the base flood elevation as designated, et cetera, plus three feet. And then it goes on to describe two other types of zones. And in every one of those three cases, that refers only to the mainland. And while the fourth item clearly says that on the island of Ocracoke, it'll be nine feet, I think for the sake of clarity, we should revise that language for those first three and just begin each one of those sentences with "on the mainland."
What page are you on, sir?
Excuse me?
I was checking for your page.
Sorry, page seven.
I will make this suggestion. We have pushed this to the last minute. We have to adopt this. We really need to adopt this tonight because our new flood maps will come into effect June 19th without having our approved ordinance. I would suggest, and I'll defer to the county attorney, but I would suggest that you vote and approve and adopt this ordinance tonight and you can come back in in July and amend the ordinance, which is very easily done. And I don't know what the public hearing requirements are to amend such an ordinance. I would believe it would have to be posted for two, 10 to 14 days because it is a land use regulation. But I would really want to. A land use regulation requires a 10 to 14 day public hearing notice for your public hearing for any ordinance that changes land regulation such as floodplain or ODO changes.
There's a new law in place with, because of COVID, that has required boards that have remote hearings not to take action after a public hearing unless 24 hours have elapsed. And that's, we had a brief conversation about that the other day. And so that my suggestion would be to just adopt this on June 10th if you have another meeting. You suggested you might have budget workshops later.
So if we change the language, do we have to go through a new advertisement period?
Well, if you look at those first three, and the other one is specifically Ocracoke, would that not distinguish, you're referring, distinguish between the two places?
Yeah, it does. It's just a matter of clarity, that's all. I thought we could make that change now, but if we're not able to make that change now, I'm not certain that it's going to land us in court. I think it's just a matter of clarity so that somebody reading it doesn't get confused as to what that language actually says.
That county attorney.
So we're unable to make any changes to the language, is that correct?
Well, let me go back to Ms. Attorney Holsher's point. Are you saying, sir, that we don't need to adopt this anyway because of the COVID law?
No, you do need to adopt it. And you do need to adopt it before June 19th if at all possible. And my point was that there's, in May, the legislature passed some kind of new law that says that when public bodies have public hearings and people, commissioners or councilmen participate remotely, they're supposed to leave it open for 24 hours so that folks can provide additional comment.
Well, it's been open for.
It's been open for months.
I realize that, but you've technically reconvened your public hearing. Your public hearing is not over. And so my suggestion was an edit like this that Commissioner Paul suggested is you could just make that before your June 10th.
Budget workshop.
If you have another meeting before June 19th, you could make a revision such as this and put it in that agenda and pass it.
I believe that would probably be our best course of action, Commissioner Paul. We can do that. We can change that language and put it on the website as changed. And then when we reconvene for your budget workshop during the week of June 8th, we can formally adopt it. If the rest of the board is inclined. Yes, that is fine. I'm just trying to make sure that we, that we have adequate time to adopt because it is quite an important deadline.
Well, do we need a motion to say we're going to make the change before our next meeting?
You can, but I don't think it's, you know, necessary.
Are there any other comments? This public hearing? So I think we're not going to vote on this and we will not pass this night. We've got to wait 24 hours. So we have our budget workshop, we can reconvene, but we can pass this at that time.
Yes, sir. I'll work with Commissioner Paul and Ms. Hodges to modify the language and then Mr. Shoemake will place a new version on our website and we'll approve this during the budget workshop held on the week of the 8th.
But close your public hearing tonight and you'll recess tonight's meeting to whatever meeting you anticipate passing this ordinance.
Do that right there.
All right, are there any other comment, public comments on the flood damage ordinance? Not, do I hear a motion to during this public hearing? Have a motion by Commissioner Simmons, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Swindell, all those in favor, let it be known, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Public hearing is adjourned.
Yes, sir. First presentation is Ms. Linda Bassini and she's going to present you her May tax collections Does everybody have a copy?
Do you have a copy of my May tax collection report and a copy of the May of 2019 report? We did collect about almost $20,000 more this past May than we did a year ago, which we need to do. Mr. Paul, I apologize for you not having these reports, but I can't run them until the day after the last day of the month. Oh, you do that, okay. Oh, okay. Good. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Linda on the tax collections report? If not, do I hear a motion to accept this report?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Swindell, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Simmons, is there any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of. Port, do I hear a second?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, the next presentation, I am happy to introduce Mr. Dave Peterson and he will be giving you your Trillium annual report.
Good evening, everybody. First, I want to thank you for allowing me to get out of the house. It's much needed in these times, so I really do appreciate the face to face. I also want to thank Commissioner Pugh and Lwana Gibbs. They both serve on our regional advisory board and have been very helpful over the past couple of years on the board. So, next slide. Just want to give an update on who Trillium is. Made the mistake last year when I went right into this, people don't remember who we are, so I'll do a little bit of who we are, the changes that are happening at the state level, some insurance company issues that are coming up, and some organizational change. And at the very end, I will give High County data specific to our services and supports. So, next slide. So who we are as numbers, Trillium Health Resources covers 26 counties. We have a total population of about 1.4 million in those 26 counties. We are responsible for 266,000 Medicaid eligible individuals. We serve about 57,000 of those Medicaid individuals that have mental health, developmental disabilities, or substance use services. And how we do that, it's broken down in the percentages of how many have mental health. About 71% have mental health, about 20% have substance use disorder, and about 10% have intellectual and developmental disabilities. How we do that is we contract with about 500 companies across those 26 counties to provide those services. We don't do the services directly, we contract to do that. And that costs $475 million a year to do that. So it's a lot of money of federal and state dollars. Our smallest county, right next door, Terrell County, and our largest county is New Hanover County, and we cover about 12,000 square miles. Next slide. So this is just a map. We have three regions. And in the northern region, you'll see we have those 10 counties up there. What's interesting about this map, 10 counties in the north, total population only 200,000 people. Nine counties in the central, and it's including Nash County, that's separate, so we're not contiguous to Nash. But Nash County is included in the central region, and that's nine counties, and it's about two and a half times the number of total population with one county less in the north. And then in the southern region, you'll see there's only seven counties down there and their total population far exceeds both central and northern regions. All right, next slide. So a couple of years ago, the state talked about Medicaid transformation. Right now, the easiest way for me to kind of explain this, we serve individuals with mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use that are very low risk all the way up to very high risk individuals, all right, in all 26 counties. The state starts talking about, two years ago, having private insurance companies coming in and managing the low risk to medium risk individuals, which is called the standard plan. Okay? plan, okay? They contracted out, they did a RFP, and those five, uh, private insurance companies are AmeriHealth, Blue Cross, United, WellCare, and Carolina Complete Health, all right? That was the plan that the state said, okay, Trillium and the other seven of us in the state, Trillium, you're gonna now have to give those individuals that you currently serve that are low-risk over to these private insurance companies to manage, all right? So they'll be managing those mild to moderate risks. Next slide, please. This is the map that the state developed on how those private insurance companies are gonna oversee, uh, those low to moderate-risk individuals. And you can see, um, in the dark blue, Hyde, Hyde County is still in our Trillium catchment area, uh, but there's been a lot of conversation that this is a bid that these private insurance had, companies had to do for the standard plan. And then, next slide, please. You'll see right there, at the top, it says tailored plan, okay? That's us managing the high-risk individuals, all right? Since the private insurance companies are gonna manage the low to moderate, we're gonna continue to manage the high risk. But we have to put an application in to do that. There's seven of us in the state, and we have to win the bid. So, this sounds a little uppity, but we're one of the best ones in the state, so we know we're gonna win, all right? But the state in legislation has said there's going to be five to seven managed care organizations. Right now, we're one of the seven, so they could cut it back to having six managed care organizations, or five. And the reason why I want you guys to hear that now is if they do decide to go to six or five, and we are one of those five, we could be getting some additional counties to our 26 counties that we currently serve, all right? We've done that multiple times. Last year, Columbus County wanted to join us. Three years ago, Nash County wanted to join us, and over the years, we've had multiple counties wanting to come to us and not stay with their current, uh, managed care organization. So, the way the state set this up was they went to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and asked for representation from all seven of the managed care organizations. And so we had a commissioner from Dare County and a commissioner from Beaufort County attend that meeting at the state, and all the commissioners at that meeting said, we're gonna keep the map the same, all right? That's what, instead of trying to juggle counties around and move it like that, but in legislation, it still says it potentially could change from seven managed care organizations down to five, all right? And I talked about we'll be managing the, um, the high-risk individuals, and here it does say, um, and this presentation was done, uh, in January, applications that we have to submit to become a tailored plan are due in, in late winter? Well, after the budget was not passed by the legislators, um, in November, the secretary basically said, we're putting everything on hold. You all do not need to apply for anything until the budget gets passed. And obviously, we all know, the budget still hasn't passed, and so we're waiting for that. The big difference, though, from what we currently do, we cur, we currently serve people with mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use, but we do not manage their physical health. You all have doctors, we all have doctors, primary care docs, all right? We don't currently manage that side, but those, once we turn into the tailored plan, we will now be managing the whole person with their mental health issues and their physical health issues, all right? Next slide, please. This plan originally had two phases going, starting in November 1. Part of the standard plan insurance companies were gonna, uh, go live, that got put off. And they have not put a timeframe on when we'll go live, but there is a bill right now that the legislators just introduced about a week and a half ago, and we don't know if it's bipartisan or not, but basically what it's saying is the private insurance company standard plans will go live January 1, all right? What that means, if it passes, we don't know if it will, if it passes, we, the tailored plan, go live one year later. So the earliest we could be just managing the high-risk individuals is January 1, 2022, all right? Next slide, please. So the impact today, everybody is still gonna be remaining in the same services, get the same supports that they get. So there's no changes today until we start seeing the legislators make some decisions on this. But what we do have to do is we have to develop the infrastructure, and when I say that, we've never managed, like I said, the physical side of an individual, so we've really gotta up our game on how to manage primary care. In other words, we have to contract with every single pharmacy in our 26 counties, all right? Every single one of them has to have a contract with us because medication of both physical and mental health goes through the pharmacies. So we have to contract with thousands and thousands of pharmacies, and we have to, um, contract with all the docs or primary care folks, doctors that do Medicaid. And so our contracts department has really gotta, um, beef it up, and there's several things. Next slide, please. Some of the organizational, uh, changes is we've developed a transition team that, um, is working on this. We did have to, uh, hire another doc to do utilization management because now we're not only, um, authorizing services for mental health, we're going to be having to authorize services for primary care also, all right? So we're gonna be doing care management over both the behavioral health and the physical health. We want to make sure that the communities that we're in are hearing more about, um, the physical side, so we have put a team together that's doing a lot of healthy eating classes and that sort of thing because we're not just focusing on the mental health stuff anymore. We have hired a head of Department of Social Services and a head of Department of Juvenile Justice, DSS and DJJ, because those, um, uh, areas we've seen over the several years have, um, been pretty, um, needy areas for people with, uh, mental health issues. And one of the outcomes of that, from our social services departments, have said, we need child respite. Well, we just opened up one, um, child respite facility about three months ago, and we're getting ready this month to open up a second one. And DSS is really happy that we're, we're doing that. And then, like I said, we're contracting with primary care and pharmacies. Next slide, please. So since standard plans will be run by insurance companies, they'll be managing part of the Medicaid dollars, all right? This is what, how we get paid. We get paid on a per member per month, the PM PM. Well, if you think about how they do that average, you have the low-cost individuals and the very high-cost individuals, and they kind of take an average. Well, if the private insurance companies take over the low-cost individuals, all right, and we're only managing the high cost, the best way to, I say it, is, let's just say our average was $50 a person, or $50 per member per month. Well, if we're now only managing the high-risk, high-cost folks, our per member per month is gonna go way up, all right? But about 75 to 80% of the people we currently manage are gonna go to the insurance companies, all right? That's a big move. Those insurance companies are gonna be managing folks that they haven't managed before. So that's about the whole person care. This waiver is supposed to be cost-neutral, okay? Next slide, please. So these next two slides, I was gonna go into all of these projects, but I'm not gonna do that, and if folks have questions afterwards, uh, feel free, because one of the things that I did want to highlight was because of the COVID-19, I want to talk about all the things that we're doing with that. So let me give you just some examples. You know, we're trying to make sure that we're following all the state orders, but we are a pretty progressive managed care organization, so sometimes we'll do something, and then the state will see it, and they'll say, oh, let's make that a statewide way of doing it, all right? So the good thing about that, we have increased our rates that we pay provider agencies anywhere from 5% to 30%, because we want to make sure these providers that do all these services stay intact. And one of the requirements in a lot of those contracts is pay your frontline staff with that rate increase. It does not need to go into the CEO's pockets or upper management's pockets, it needs to go into the staff that are working directly within individuals. We've loosened up on our authorization process, so in other words, if someone usually gets authorized for 30 days, because of the, all the backroom stuff that has to be done in an authorization, we may say 90 days, all right? We are really trying to promote telehealth. A lot of our services have gone telehealth so that folks can still get those services by remaining at home. We have set up weekly, uh, question-and-answer calls. Every Tuesday morning, we have provider agencies, uh, calling in to ask questions about how they, they need to operationalize. We did develop COVID-19 brochures, we sent them to every, I think, health department got it here, um, and so, that being said, we want to make sure, as soon as we can get out more, then we want to make sure that all the health departments, DSSs, um, those folks have, have those brochures. We have done, um, another round of naloxone kits, and I will say, um, we haven't seen an increase in calls in our call center, but we've had, um, an increase in two types of calls. So total calls haven't gone up, but we've seen, uh, more calls on folks needing housing and folks needing substance abuse services. And this is just me saying this, this is Trillium saying this, my gut says we're gonna have an uptick, pretty significant uptick in, in more substance abuse, uh, calls and housing calls, um, as this thing continues. And it primarily is, a lot of it's associated with folks being out of jobs. We have also loosened up on our credentialing process so that makes it easier for providers. So let me skip then to the slide that says consumer served for Hyde County. Thanks, sir. So this is Hyde County-specific data. Total of 217 individuals in Hyde County were served last year. Those with a primary diagnosis of mental health was 179, a primary diagnosis of substance use was 38, and a primary diagnosis of intellectual and developmental disability is 13. Folks, don't try to add the numbers up because a lot of those folks have, are duly diagnosed individuals, uh, so. And that is the end of my presentation, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Peterson, I have a, a question, and I don't know if you can answer it, but when do you see us opening back up, and I know this is a crystal ball question, but when would you see us opening back up for our developmentally disabled day, day programs?
Day programs?
Yes, day programs.
So that's a really good question. So what we had last week was a live conference call with all the, um, intellectually and developmentally disabled IDD day programs. And what we're requiring for them to do is submit us a plan on how they want to reopen. And so we are gonna be reviewing those plans, keeping in mind, we got to keep with what the state's requirements are. So, and the question, the first question that came out in that conference call last week was, when can we submit them? And we said, right away. That, so we'll be reviewing those plans, and once, um, they get approved, then they can open back up, but they, they won't be able to open back up the exact same way. I mean, social distancing, all, all those variables have to be followed that the state is putting on, so.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Patterson?
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Peter, you mentioned housing. How, how do you all address housing issues, and what kind of housing issues do you address?
So, the, the two populations that we serve are people that are on Medicaid and people that have absolutely no insurance at all, all right? But the people on absolutely no insurance, those dol, those are state dollars, those are very limited, limited funds. But what we do have is we have a staff, um, a housing department at Trillium, and they continue to write, uh, federal and state grants to get any type of money they can get in. And so what we've had to do is convince some of the state grants that housing in Raleigh is completely different than housing in eastern North Carolina, because at one point, we had to convince them that trailers were housing, when they weren't gonna allow that to occur with some federal and state dollars. And so we're working on a variety of ways to get federal and state dollars of any types of housing for people with disabilities. And when I say that, some of those, um, let, let me just use an example, if there's, um, four condominiums or, or four apartments, potentially, one of those apartments could be used for a staff person, and then the other three be used for people with mental health issues, okay? So that they'd have a staff close by. Or if they were higher functioning, then they could have, um, all four of those apartments could be utilized with people with mental health, and then they would just have staff go in and check on them. So there's a variety of different types of housing out there that we try to access. We can't, if, we can't be cookie cutter with, um, with, uh, the size of our 26 counties. Does that help?
Sure. So, so typically, you're gonna address a housing issue because you've already got an identified client, not because somebody comes to you specifically with a housing issue or initially with a housing issue? Is that correct?
That's a very good question. So, most of the individuals that we do serve are already in our system that are receiving behavioral health or substance abuse or developmental disability services. But I think what I was implying, as more and more people are losing jobs, we're most likely going to see an uptick in the mental health issues around that. And so what happens with that is they lose their job, uh-oh, I'm gonna get kicked out of my house, and then mental health issues arise, and then we may be able to serve them because they have mental health issues along with their housing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Peterson, we appreciate your update. It's a lot of great information, and, um, if, uh, there are no further questions, then we'll thank you for your presentation.
Good seeing you all.
Thank you, Dave.
Take care.
Yes.
Next presentation is a call for public hearing in regard to the 2020-21 budget message. Tonight, you were given a binder which has a draft budget along with my budget message. This binder contains your 2020-2021 recommended annual budget as required by North Carolina General Statute 159 and the Local Government Budget and Physical Control Act. Notice that this submission will be given to the media and the public, and a public hearing will be scheduled at the end of this presentation. A copy of this proposed budget and buzzet, budget message will be placed on file with the clerk to the board in the Hyde County Government Center in Swan Quarter and at the Community Center in Ocracoke, and also on the Hyde County website for public inspection. I am recommending to this board that we set, um, a budget workshop for I am recommending to this board that we set a budget workshop for the week of June the 8th. In my prepared statement, I said June the 10th, but I know we have some conflicts, and so when I finish with the presentation of this message, we'll discuss that date for the workshop. I do recommend that a public hearing be held on Monday, June 15th, 2020, and additional workshops can be held prior to the required adoption, which must be by July 1. In regard to this budget, economic indicators and assumptions that were utilized. It is, it is an understatement to say that the economic and revenue impact from Hurricane Dorian and COVID are both severe and uncertain. In regard to Dorian, preliminary estimates from our building permit application showed a loss of property tax value on Ocracoke Island at approximately $15 million. Although our normal indicators for sales and use tax are not yet published, Hyde County estimates a reduction of 30%, which would result in a budget shortfall of approximately $458,925 for sales and use. Now remember that this is just our loss for Dorian and does not encompass the full loss of Dorian and COVID. In a report that was delivered to the Office of State Budget Management from the Hyde County Managers Office in early April, we estimated the total budget shortfall from Dorian alone would be approximately $714,000. In regard to COVID-19, I want to update you on the many primary county revenue sources that have been impacted as a result of their extremely reduced consumer activity, mandates put in place to combat COVID-19 and the corresponding economic downturn. It is almost impossible to make solid predictions because there are so many unknown factors as of yet, including how long these efforts will be necessary, what types of physical support state and federal government and the Federal Reserve will provide, how long and what shape an economic recovery will take, and near complete lack of data and comparable events to inform the current public health crisis. Basically, as we've all been saying, we've never seen anything like this before. Now I believe that we as a county should prepare for extreme impacts due to our county's reliance on tourism and the downturn of our tourism-based economy. Wrapping up our 2020 budget and crafting our 2021 plans under this new and uncertain dynamic has been an extremely challenging task. For these reasons, I have made some very difficult decisions in this proposed budget I've given you tonight, and I have tried to do so without impacting the services that we offer to our citizens. Here's a budget overview. Due to the still unknown economic impacts of COVID-19, the recommended budget expenditures in your book are cut below prior levels to balance with the projected decreased revenue estimates. This budget is $160,525 less than last year's general fund budget. Funding for the school system will remain at last year's levels. The recommended budget allocates funding to continued services to Hyde County citizens at the same level as this past year. No services or jobs are cut in this proposed budget. The recommended budget maintains the same tax rate, 77 cent per $100 of assessed valuation. But the proposed budget does utilize $1,567,542.43 in our current fund balance. In regard to expenditures within your budget, the uncertainty of the economy has led me to cut all expenditures at every avenue possible to ensure financial solvency. There was very little room to cut with decrease in service, without decreasing our services because our budget has been trimmed and trimmed over the last 10 years, and we have aggressively worked to maintain ultimate efficiency. The budget was very slim to begin with. Travel expenses have been cut across the board in your budget. I believe there will be very little, if any, in-person training offered in light of COVID-19, and I think that new innovative virtual learning opportunities will be offered in their place. I have cut all requests from outside nonprofits by 20% across the board. Now more than ever, it is important that our nonprofit partners look towards capital campaign projects and budget independence. I have continued to fund the volunteer fire department matching funds for state equipment grants. This is a tremendous expense to the county, it's not undertaken lightly, and it was very, and it's a very difficult expense to absorb. However, I do believe it's necessary to maintain adequate fire protection across our county. If a review of revenues in December and January show higher revenues than we have budgeted for and or projected, requests for budget increases and allocations into our fund balance can be considered mid-year. In regard to revenues, ad valorem tax, the proposed budget maintains the county tax rate at 77 cent per 100 of assessed value. The estimated total taxable value is $886,461,530. Our collection rate is being utilized is 93.6. We use that to calculate the total valuation, and this year, the estimated total real property valuation is down approximately $13,532.252. So we are coming out of the gate this year with a loss of real property in, in the amount of $13 million plus. Now our current sales assessment ratio is .8727. We discussed that number in great detail when we talked about append and reevaluation. Now that indicates that our assessed values right now are greater than our market values. Multiplying the tax rate by the sales assessment ratio produces an effective tax rate, and that allows for comparisons across counties. Now the effective tax rate for Hyde County after that calculation is .67, which makes Hyde County the 57th lowest in North Carolina in regard to our rate. That means 56 of our fellow counties are lower and 43 have higher tax rates. Now this number can be considered favorable considering there are no municipalities, no cities, or no town assessments in addition to the Hyde County tax assessment. Sales tax. The current economic issues lead us to decrease our projection for sales tax revenue as these numbers are highly questionable. The impact of COVID is going to bring negative growth in the last quarter of this fiscal year. We won't know the full impact on our final quarter until September 2020. Now this budget is based on recommendations from the NC Association of County Commissioners, which included a 30%, suggested 30% decrease in sales tax revenue, and that's the number we utilized. And this is a monumental loss of revenue for Hyde County. And coupled with the sales, the ad valorem tax loss, we have a monumental loss of revenue across the board. All revenue sources decreased this year and are expected to decrease next year, except in federal and state grants funded has been received through the CARES Act and through the Office of State Budget, Budget Management for both Dorian and COVID. Strategies to move forward. We're going to continue to rebuild and recover in Ocracoke. With the state's generous support, two positions have been funded to aid the county in our recovery efforts. A grant administrator, which is a grant-funded position, is now on staff, and a disaster recovery specialist, also a grant-funded position, will be procured. These two positions are going to be integral in applying for administering and reporting on funding we need to rebuild where federal and state funding allow that opportunity. In regard to tax collection and records improvement, this was our number one goal last year. We did really well up until September 6th. Until September, the improvement in our tax collection sense system had been paramount, and the implementation of the farragut system was showing promise at improving our tax collection rate. Coordinated and aggressive mechanisms were implemented, including targeted collections based on new data from the farragut system, credit card payment capability was introduced, debt set off was used aggressively, and legal intervention was also realized during that first few months last year. Payment plan guidelines were established based on the age and amount of the debt. Moving forward, staff will return to the previous momentum of improving our tax collection rate and ensuring our tax records are accurate. Another strategy for moving forward is continue to aggressively apply for grant funding. Hyde County will aggressively apply for all funding opportunities to bring in revenue and improvements. Housing improvements, upgrades to infrastructure and economic development opportunities will be sought and utilized. Water and flood control will continue to be a major focus to not only protect our homes, but our economic centers. Grant funding will continue to fund major capital improvements to our drainage infrastructure systems. We will continue to do more with less. Hyde County has a dedicated staff with a great deal, a great bit of talent and dedication to the citizens of this county. Service levels can continue to increase through low-cost and no-cost solutions. Last year, I promised to bring better convenient site service to Ocracoke, and through some minor investment, a lot of communication, and finding the right staff person, I believe we are on the right road to providing that continued improvement and that experience to our public. Although funding may be less than desired for this fiscal year, our goals can be accomplished with clear and consistent action moving forward. Given the extreme disaster and the challenges we have faced over the last year and will continue to face moving forward, Hyde County is still in good financial shape. Our fund balance continues to be healthy with this portion of our rainy day fund being utilized this year. We have certainly seen our fair share of rainy days in this past budget year. I look forward to working with you all as you review and consider the options, and I look forward to working to implement this budget while serving the citizens of Hyde County. And this is respectively submitted by your manager. And at this point, I'd like to have a discussion with you gentlemen in regard to coming together the week of June the 8th to hold a board budget workshop. I had originally suggested the 10th. There are some conflicts with the 10th, and the board has asked us to take a look at the day of the 9th. And so I would like to have some open discussion about how the day of the 9th works for each person on this board, and also is there a preferred time? I prefer a day meeting, but if that is not possible because you gentlemen, that work, then that's completely understandable, so I will open the floor to you all for that discussion.
What's the reason we're not having a debate?
Yes, sir. We had a conflict on the 8th and the 10th, and that left the 9th, 11th, and 12th, and we'd really like to shoot for the public hearing on the 15th. So if we had it on the night, it would give us some time if we needed to get back in here towards the end of the week. I'd hope we could knock it out in one day, but that gives us some leeway.
For what it's worth, my preference would be to be there in person. So if we could do a daytime meeting, I would appreciate that.
I would like that as well, sir. And also, if I need my staff in here, it works so much better to have them in the day if you gentlemen could do that.
Would the 9th at 10 o'clock? Get here by 10, can't you, Tom?
Yes, I, I think I can get there, you know, five or 10 minutes past 10, yes.
That, that date acceptable, everybody?
Good with me.
James? Okay? So if we will set, June 9th, 10 o'clock for a budget workshop?
Yes, sir. And then the second date I'd like for you all to consider is a day and time for your public hearing. And I have recommended Monday, June the 15th, but I am open to any suggestions and or feedback on that date. I think it'll be 10 until recessed. I don't think we'll have a time for that. That's appropriate, isn't it, sir, to have it 10 and then the endings open and then, yes, 10 until finished, huh?
Is it 10 or 10:30, the 15? Will we be here till after?
But the period is seven, so you shouldn't be here by 10.
Okay. I'll just call this if you're there after 10.
Would you consider having the public hearing on Monday, June 15th at 5:00 PM?
Is that agreeable with it? Does anybody have any problem with that?
That's fine by me.
Tom might have a waterways commission meeting that night.
Oh.
I don't know if they're meeting yet, though. Tom, is the waterways commission meeting yet?
They are not, as far as I know.
Because the 15th would typically be the meeting date for them.
Yeah. I haven't heard anything from them about holding a meeting.
I'm not going to meet that after, Tom.
I would like them to.
Is that okay with everybody here?
15th.
15th, 5 o'clock, you know, 5:00 PM.
Yes, sir.
For a public hearing on the budget. And, and I reckon we could set the date on the night. If we don't get through, we could come back maybe that earlier or figure out a date after that if we don't get through the whole budget on the night.
Yes, sir.
We'll cross that bridge when we get there.
Yes, sir.
All right, is that agreeable, everybody? Okay. So we have a public hearing on June 15th, 5:00 PM.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next item on your agenda is the recognition of employee, volunteer, and friend of the county. This week, last week, we were, we were, well, very, very excited for the future. We were also sad to learn that one of our team members, Justin Gibbs, was going to be leaving Hyde County to pursue opportunity away. And so I wanted to have him here tonight, Justin. If you want to come up to the podium, I wanted to have an opportunity, given more time and different circumstances, Justin, we would have done so much more, but I would be remiss to not thank you for 12 years.
Twelve and a half, over 12 and a half, yeah.
Twelve and a half. I was telling Ben, Commissioner Simmons, a funny story that Justin and I came out here and applied for the same job 12 and a half years ago, and we were neither one hired for it. But we found other places that we fit within the local government, and Justin has been one of the most competent and dedicated and hard-working, amazing individuals I've ever worked with, and you'll be sorely missed, and Hyde County is a better place for having you.
Thank you.
So I'd like to give you guys a minute to wish Justin well.
Can I also offer a farewell?
Yes, please, sir.
You want me to go ahead and do that now?
Yes.
Okay. So as Chris outlined, I resigned from my position as Emergency Services Director. My final day of employment is this Friday. I've accepted employment with Multnomah County. I've accepted employment with Multnomah County, which will put me into Southeast Portland, Oregon, as a Senior Emergency Management Planner. Over the past several weeks, I've intensely reflected on my career and all the way back to the beginning, which you referenced in your comments. When I applied for the Deputy Emergency Manager job, I remember going before the interview panel, and I told them that I had applied because I wanted to give back to the community that gave me so much. And I've realized that that was an overly optimistic goal, and that Hyde County is a lot more than that. Hyde County is interwoven in the fabric of who I am, and I hope to represent it well in all my future endeavors. I want to, in closing, I want to offer thanks to the citizens of Hyde County and the staff and the county manager and the Board of Commissioners and all our local state and federal partners that have supported me both personally and professionally over my career. And I'm leaving Hyde County with a lot more than an experience. I'm leaving with a much larger family. And I want to thank you all for everything you've done for me over my 12 and a half years. Thank you.
Justin, I'd like to just echo what Chris said. You've been meant a lot for this county, and I know over the last few years, we've been a lot of disasters to get through. And I've been on the board almost eight years. It seems like every year we're having a state of emergency or evacuation or something, and the way you handle all of that and all of them people to help has been a tremendous asset to our county, and I'd like to wish you well in your new endeavor. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
I want to thank Justin because he has the boundaries of his job defined, but he always went well beyond them. The fact we had an ice storm one night, and we couldn't get dispatchers to the sheriff's office, so Justin went out and retrieved them, and he's delivering dispatchers through this horrible conditions. At the same time, he's answering radio calls, and he's making sure aid is being delivered and road conditions are being checked. Any disaster we have, you see him go by the house checking road conditions and stopping and talking with community leaders. And thank you for all that. And you're going to represent Hyde County well wherever you go.
Thank you.
I'd like to add how important Justin was, and in a lot of ways will continue to be, to Ocracoke as we're, you know, working our way through the recovery from Hurricane Dorian. Justin was here immediately after the storm and moved into Ocracoke, lived here for the first several months of the recovery, and was just invaluable to us in so many ways, both in terms of his just personal knowledge and his ability to coordinate and his connections and his networking with the state and federal partners. He was just absolutely invaluable to us. And a lot of the work that he did those first few months is going to carry us forward to the completion of our recovery. So Justin, while you are leaving us, you have to know that the work that you did is going to carry on and be helpful to Ocracoke going forward. I don't know what you're going to do going someplace else besides Hyde County. There's just no place that has the kind of amount of sort of regular emergencies. You're going to go someplace and be bored. You'd be wondering what to do.
I fear that, I really do. I really do fear that I'll be bored.
Well, we kept you busy, that's for sure, and you did a great job. We'll miss you greatly.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And I would echo what everybody else has said. Justin, you're an amazing individual, and I know even before I got on the board, when I was a Drainage Commissioner, still am in Fairfield, you know, can we get Justin to work on these maps? I know he can get them right. And just over and over again, your impact in helping this county, I think is going to be really, really missed. And I'll be honest with you, it troubles me to know that you're not going to be here to answer some of the hard questions. I hope that we'll still have your phone number to get up with you, but, yeah, I'm thankful for all you've done for this county, and I'm thankful for all you've done, you know, for residents, for me, for the drainage efforts in this county. You know, I remember one time that one of the attorneys we had said that we can't change the mapping, and guess whose mapping? We ended up changing it to was the mapping that Justin was able to perform for us here. You're a huge asset for this county. Thank you for all you've done, and I know you'll do great wherever you go, and thank you.
I appreciate it, Commissioner Simmons, and I'll always be available to Hyde County, even when I'm going from here, and I'm providing my personal number, and I've committed to be available up until I start my new employment, but it won't stop there. I'll be available anytime to Hyde County, and I appreciate your comments.
I don't know a whole lot about the professional side, but I do remember when you was a baby. My mama used to go get you and bring you in the store, and she could take care of you, both of you and your brother, Josh. And from that point on, I guess it was something special that I felt about you from a personal standpoint. My whole family did. Loved Justin, loved Josh. And you grew up to be a very good young man, and I'm proud of you. And I'm proud to know that we have that connection from a personal standpoint. And my sister said, "You take care of my boy."
I hear you.
I said, "I got it." Good luck to you, buddy.
Thank you very much, sir. I really appreciate it. My mama called up here the other day, so I, she checking on me.
Okay.
Justin, we miss you, and we don't have anything to present to you tonight, but we will be sending you something. And we appreciate your service, huh?
I wish I could shake everybody's hands and give hugs, but I thank you so much for everything. I really mean it.
Thank you, Justin.
Can I say that's about the shortest time Justin's ever been at the podium?
I think that might be true. Chairman, it's time for public comments.
Right. It is time for public comments. Public comments are a time where the public make comments to the county commissioners. Comments should be kept three minutes or less, and comments can be directed to the entire board, not individual members, staff, or other members of the public. Comments requesting assistance will typically be referred to the county manager for follow-up or board action in at a future meeting. Is there any comments from anybody? Do we have any mail-in comments?
Tony?
We had no voicemail comments. I believe we had only email comment and no web submission. So the one email comment should be in your packet.
Did everybody get the email? Did the mail-in email come in?
Yes.
I think I read it all. It was the email.
Yes, sir, it is in your packet.
It was another request for us to be on.
Where is that comment?
Yes, this is the, is it in our book, Ms. Lois?
I think it was where, if you had to sub from the tax office, or that's where mine were, that was where the handouts for the budget changes and the tax report. There it is, yeah. It says Gmail at the top.
Yeah, it was on a handout.
It's not a real one, somebody else read it.
Do you want to read it?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Dear Ms. Noble and the Hyde County Commissioners, rather than a voicemail requiring transcription for posting as public comment with virtual meeting, this request is being sent via email. Once again, as part of public comments for Hyde County, we are requesting fair representation of non-resident property owners of Ocracoke on the Ocracoke Control Group. This request is based on the fact that the Control Group advises the Board of Commissioners leading to decisions that significantly impact this group that has no say whatsoever in those decisions. You must certainly have the numbers and are familiar with them, but we believe that perhaps one half or more of residential properties on the island, rental or not, are owned by non-resident property owners. Residential property taxes from that group are therefore far more insignificant for Hyde County. Based on this fact alone, this group warrants some recognition. In response of my previous inquiry, the county manager noted that reevaluation of the Control Group had been planned and would be addressed after the state of emergency for the county was lifted. This would then have occurred with reentry of tourists May 16th. Certainly, a control group must exist since Ocracoke is not incorporated, and the only elected official available should serve as the lead. And our POs simply seek a voice in decisions regarding restrictions and reentry that impact us in many ways in the island in general. Since the Control Group positions must be appointed, perhaps there could be an application process requiring resumes and other potential information submitted to the board upon posting. Perhaps a resident property owner on the island, not necessarily business-related, should serve as well. As you review the makeup of the Ocracoke Control Group, we respectfully ask you to consider this request and proceed to an agenda item as soon as possible if needed. Brenda and Jeff Peacock, 312 Riverside Drive, Washington, North Carolina, 68 Jackson Circle, Ocracoke, North Carolina. That is the only public comment we have received for this meeting.
Go ahead. Leave a little message.
Yes, sir. Items of consideration, resolutions, proclamations, and ordinances, and this particular section is quite beefy this evening. We'll begin with a resolution to reconcile our state of emergency COVID-19 proclamations. As you all know, we are still under a state of emergency for not only COVID-19, but for Hurricane Dorian. This particular ratification of proclamations ratifies Amendment Number 5 to our Coronavirus 2019 proclamation and Amendment Number 6. And we are asking you gentlemen to adopt these proclamations this evening.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Paul. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Swindell. Is there any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, let them know I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'm going to ask Ms. Gibbs to come up and present the next project budget ordinance for Hurricane recovery.
The ordinance set before y'all this evening is the budget expected to be extended and received for Dorian. I ask that you approve that. It's going to be a multi-year ordinance, and we'll be dealing with it for a very long time.
As you'll see, it details the revenues and expenditures for Hurricane Dorian activities. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. Under the item, building repairs for $75,000, does that include the repair work at the Ocracoke Fire Station? Where do we stand on that? There was, they had, they incurred a considerable amount of wear and tear and use that was directly related to the hurricane, and there had been, at some point, at least an effort to roll them into our FEMA claim. Is that correct? Do I have that right?
They opted to not do that. Their volunteer fire department had submitted their own application. They opted not to roll in with Hyde County. When you and I had spoke about that, they had done the paperwork right before we had that conversation. So they are under a separate application outside of the county, so no, that does not include that. That is our application that's set in before you. They've got their own.
Do you have any idea where they stand with that claim?
The exact same place that we're at, because we have the same rep, Mr. Ryan Germany, as both our liaisons.
And what is that? So currently, we've submitted our claims?
Yes.
And we're awaiting review.
What I did with the debris, because it's such a massive project, and we've already spent $3 million out of general fund money, is I went ahead and stopped that right as we expended it, and I went ahead and submitted it. And then, once the project completely closes out, we true it up afterwards so we could get some money back quicker. Everything else is still under review. Now, with the Ocracoke Volunteer Fire Department, I know they have submitted all of their paperwork, but I don't know if he has put it in yet. They'll have their own portal application and their portal login. I won't be able to see that.
Okay.
They were an eligible entity, Commissioner Paul, to apply as a standalone entity.
Okay. Is there anything that we can do to assure that that's moving along?
I can't do anything with that, no, sir. When they submitted their own application, they stepped out on their own. I can't do anything past that.
Okay. Well, I feel some obligation to them because they let us use that fire station, and we really used it, and I would like to be sure that the work that needs to be done gets done. Thank you.
We don't have, we have no ability to help them manage their claim, Commissioner Paul, after they went out and became their own applicant. However, if it makes you feel any better, I will tell you that our FEMA rep this time around is probably one of the best, most knowledgeable, comprehensive, and easy to get along with FEMA reps that we've ever worked with. Would you say that, Ms. Gibbs?
Yes, it's the first time I've ever had just one person instead of 30.
So we're all big fans of him, and he's also the rep for the volunteer fire department. And so, and we would be happy to relay any advice to them if they run into hiccups, but we can't manage their project. We could have if they'd applied underneath our project, but being independent, they're going to, they'll be, they'll only, they'll be the only ones with access to that information.
Okay, thank you. I'll be in touch with them and then maybe get back with you if you have personal contact with the rep. It may be useful. Thank you.
Yes, we're happy to facilitate that discussion and that relationship and give them any pointers that we have learned over our many, many years of the FEMA requirements. We would be happy to work with them in any way.
Good, thank you.
But did you say that the debris removal has been approved, $3 million, that's already?
What I did is I was at February 16th. The rep would come every week, and we had to scan, I was handling multiple USB drives with all the debris information. He took it, and we got to a point where we were paying the debris contractor week after week, and I said, "Can we go ahead and submit right now?" So we kept it at February the 16th, the work completed to that date, and we've already submitted that. So that's work completed, that we're going to try to go ahead as fast as FEMA can work, and sometimes that's not very fast.
But that's part of the list.
Yes, it is, that I'm trying to get money back. The whole, the whole entire will be $6 million, hopefully not above that.
Is there any opportunity for any further claims for debris removal? Because I know that there are some folks who are still working on their houses, in particular, the people who are elevating houses are finding that when they get those houses lifted up, almost every one of them has a cistern or two, which is, turns into a lot of concrete debris, and it's pretty costly to get that moved out of there. Is there any way that we can include that in the FEMA claim for debris removal?
No, sir. When we just sat down and discussed the last day of debris pickup, and you were there, remember we extended it the first time for another four weeks?
I do recall.
We extended it. We extended it twice, I think, but it was a four-week total period. Once that last press release went out, it was done as far as FEMA-eligible debris removal.
So at this point, Commissioner Paul, the debris removal was not meant or ever meant to recover reconstruction. The debris removal is from the storm-related debris only, and it's not the reconstruction of the home and/or the elevation of the home. Now, if we do have homeowners that are experiencing difficulty, there are other avenues. If a person is having their home elevated through an insurance claim, then they need to make sure that they are claiming that debris removal cost in their insurance. You know, a lot of insurance claims for elevation and/or reconstruction include a line item for debris disposal. If we run into someone, and I know we had discussed this earlier, that is low to moderate income and does not have the resources to complete the debris portion, we have worked with the Long Term Recovery Group to work with them to provide funding for a container on site. And later in the agenda tonight, during the project budget ordinance, North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency State Grant Assistance that was added, we did receive another pot of money to go into the Long Term Recovery Group for individual assistance. And so if we have someone who's working with casework, who's truly needy, and doesn't have duplicated insurance benefits or duplicated benefits that qualify under the Long Term Recovery Group, we can work with them to potentially cover that cost. But the FEMA debris removal ship has failed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the budget, project budget ordinance for Hurricane Dorian?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Paul. Do I hear a second?
Right.
Second by Commissioner Simmons. Any more discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, let them know saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Also, Commissioner Paul, the bright spot, there seems to be a lot more capacity at your convenience site right now for C and D, which is also a wonderful new turn of events. So that does help those that have that minimal amount of C and D, and I'm very happy, and I think that will continue to be that way. So very happy to have capacity at the convenient site for C and D and all the other grades of debris that we take there. I'm very happy that the cans are empty and there's capacity.
Good, thank you.
Next item on your agenda is the project, we pulled the COVID.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we actually, we meant to delete the project budget ordinance for COVID-19. We are not going to present and/or adopt a budget ordinance for our COVID-19 expenditures yet. We're still working on how those will be taken into the budget. Your next item is the ordinance to amend the Hyde County Animal Control Ordinance. One of the best things about this job is that it's very challenging and you're continually learning. Months ago, myself, I brought to you a change in the Animal Control Ordinance. It was a fairly simple change, and what it did within that language was it changed your hearing officer from the county manager to a board appointed by the Hyde County Board of Commissioners. We took a board vote on that, and we moved forward, and after a little bit more research, I realized that your board vote could not amend the ordinance adopted through the Hyde County Code. An ordinance cannot be amended except by ordinance. Therefore, the language proposed in the original board vote in March has been prepared as an ordinance and attached. So if you'll find that ordinance, you'll see the exact same language you adopted under board vote prepared in ordinance, and tonight I ask you to adopt this amended ordinance.
Do I hear a motion to adopt the amended animal ordinance?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Swindell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Paul. Is there any discussion? And this is, this is the identical ordinance that we, well, not ordinance, but the identical thing that we passed in March?
Yes, sir. It's the, it's the identical language, but you did it in a board vote. And after I went back and took a close look at it, I learned that you cannot amend an ordinance through a board vote, and you cannot amend an ordinance through a resolution. You can only amend an ordinance through another adopted ordinance. And so you changed the language in Section 416, or you made a board vote to change that language in Section 416, Section B. It originally read that the animal control hearing officer would be the county manager, but we changed that to be a little more congruent with state statute, and now there is a Animal Control Hearing Board, and that's composed of the board chair of the Board of Commissioners, a member of the Hyde County Board of Health, and the Hyde County Health Director. So that was the language that you all adopted in April? March, I'm sorry. You adopted that language in, in March through board vote, and this just puts it in the proper format.
Hey, is there any more discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
The county sheriff, our deputy, is the designated as the person responsible determining when a dog is considered dangerous or potentially dangerous. What governs him, I tell the deputy what to look for in a potentially dangerous dog.
That language has not changed. That is the language that's already in our ordinance, and that is defined in General Statute 67-4.1, the state law.
Do you know, I have a copy.
Of the state law?
I'm sorry, I didn't bring my file for that, but the statute defines what a dangerous dog is, and the statute defines what a potentially dangerous dog is. It's a practical matter. I'm sure your animal control officer also collaborates with them
Yes.
in these situations to help make that determination. And basically, you need someone to start the process. Dangerous dog is, is one that has, if my memory is correct, has, I think, killed another animal.
There's a series, I think, of four different stipulations. One of them is has killed another domesticated animal. Also, if they have seriously hurt a human, bit a human. There's four different criteria laid out through state statute for being determined dangerous and potentially dangerous.
So they go by the guidelines that the state has laid out?
Yes, sir.
With input from your animal control officer, and then this is a mechanism through which the dog owner can appeal that determination.
We also do, we also do confer with County Attorney Holsher prior to any type of action. We always get his review and/or advice.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah.
Did we have a motion? Yeah, we got a motion, that's second.
Is there any more discussion on the animal ordinance?
I think they're right.
If not, all those in favor, let them know saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on your agenda is a resolution authorizing the county manager to reconcile department budgets. At the end of each fiscal year, the board gives the manager authority through resolution to reconcile our departmental budgets for year-end closeout. The conditions are detailed in the attached resolution. You'll look at the resolution. We do this each year to close out our books. We transfer amounts between objects of expenditure within a department, except for salary amounts without limitations. We transfer amounts up to $10,000 between departments of the same fund with an official report of such transfers made at the next meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We do not transfer any amount between funds nor from contingency with any fund, and we do not assign legal costs to departments based upon the legal issue involved. This is something I ask you to do each year.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Simmons, a second by Commissioner Swindell. Is there any more discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, let them know saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
It's that time of the year where we talk about life and health insurance, and I'd like to ask our Human Resources Director, Ms. Tammy Blake, to present items of consideration number two, life and health insurance renewal. Ms. Tammy?
Each year, we have to review our insurance, and the county pays 100% for our employees, and the employee has to pay 100% of the premium for their children. Currently, the only people that can cover are their children. They are not allowed to cover their spouse. And I come before you tonight asking your permission to start covering the spouse. And we propose that the spouse be covered and the employee pay that premium at 100% as well, so there'll be no expense to the county. We've had several employees asking for this accommodation. I have had several department heads also asking for this accommodation because it's hard to attract good employees whenever they can't cover their spouse with medical insurance. The marketplace, as you probably have heard, the Obamacare, is very expensive whenever the employee has to go out and get the spouse coverage on the marketplace. I've heard over $1,000 is pretty normal. So I do ask that we, the plan will cover the spouse, but it's only covering the spouse if the spouse cannot get insurance through their current employer. So that will be a stipulation with them being able to cover their spouse. Like my husband, he works at Weyerhouse, or he's already covered with insurance. I could not cover my husband. It's just for the spouses that cannot get coverage through their employer, like if they are stay-at-home moms or if they're self-employed. So I do ask for you to review this and maybe have a discussion about it and approve it, please.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
As long as it's not costing the county anything, if it's a benefit, the employee's paying it, I'm good with it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Simmons and a second by Commissioner Swindell to approve the health insurance renewal for prices of employees.
How about us counting commissions? Can we get health insurance?
Yeah, we got it. Is there any more discussion or any discussion on that?
Can we pay it?
Hear none, all those in favor of the motion, let them know saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you so much. They will be very happy. Thank you, Ms. Tammy. Yes, sir.
Somewhere back here.
Yes, sir.
The EMS station that was in the budget ordinance, is that my?
Yes, sir. I'll get right there back there.
Franz caught it for me, and I was just getting ready to jump back. Gentlemen, I had amended the agenda earlier and added two more items under Resolutions, Proclamations, and Ordinances, and then I skipped right over them. So I would like to go back to those two items really quickly. Clint, can I do that really quick? It'll be quick. I'm so sorry, sir. I skipped right over them. One is the project budget ordinance for the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency State Grant Assistance. You have a handout. We have been blessed that North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency gave us a temporary cash assistance in April in the amount of $1 million. If you looked at your FEMA project budget ordinance, that million dollars is utilized for cash flow while we're awaiting our reimbursement. We have recently, as recently as this Friday, the 28th, we were sent a second appropriation of an additional $1 million to continue to cover the costs until we wait our FEMA reimbursement. The attached project budget ordinance shows that revenue for INCOR, which will now be at a total cash flow assistance loan of $2 million, and I ask you to approve the memorandum of agreement, which is the exact same language County Attorney Holsher approved in April, and also approve and adopt the amended project budget ordinance. So I need both of those in the form of a motion on my recommendations from you gentlemen.
Do I hear a motion to approve the amendment of the project budget ordinance?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Paul, second by Commissioner Swindell. Any discussion?
Is that at a 0% interest?
Yes, sir. It's just the in and out. It's a 0% interest, and it just is, they send us the money and we utilize it for cash flow until we receive our FEMA reimbursement, and FEMA reimbursement directly pays the loan back.
Thank you.
Need any more discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be them saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The second agenda item is amendment to the project budget ordinance for INCOR temporary cash assistance. So the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency has sent us loan money and grant money. In the month of April, they sent us $500,000 in direct grant funding to pay for two positions, administrative overhead, and a housing study. They have now sent us an additional $2.2,214,000 in addition to the 500 as of Friday. So we are quite happy to receive that money. If you look at the project budget ordinance, you'll see how that money was allocated. It was allocated $714,000 into the Hyde County budget for operating budget shortfalls, $650,000 for individual assistance. Tom, that is that pot of money I was talking about that will refuel the pot for the long-term recovery group's individual assistance activities, because that pot had gone to zero, and now there'll be an additional influx there. And then the third is housing reconstruction, where the state has sent us $850,000 to reconstruct eight to 10 homes on the island. So I'm asking you all to approve the MOA and approve and adopt the project budget ordinance.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Paul, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Swindell. Is there any more discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, let them know saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
And I'm sorry, Clint, it's your turn, sir.
Chris, I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
In here, there's something about the Ocracoke EMS station. In my pocket, it's not on there. Right there.
Can we just put this on next?
Yeah.
It's just the...
It's not on the agenda, but it was in the book.
It's just the type, it was just some type, and it doesn't have to be done.
Okay.
And I apologize for that. And gentlemen, it seems like there's a lot of things that are put into here because that there are. The CARES Act funding and the funding from the state is coming down so fast, and with some staff changes we've had in the office, there is a lot going on, and I apologize if those things come at you so fast. So I will let Mr. Berry talk about water rates.
Thank you. I think everybody's got a copy of our proposed water rate increase in your file. Everything that's in red out to the right side of what's written in black is the proposed changes. And basically, we're looking at just raising the rates by as little as possible, but I do feel like... do feel like we're at this point in time where we do need a rate increase. It's been 12 years since we had our last rate increase, which has been quite a while. There's probably very few municipalities in the state that's probably went 12 years without having a rate increase. So it's very minimal. We're looking at raising the minimum water rate for a residential house just by a dollar a month. We want to raise the per 1,000 gallons by a dollar, and it steps up, so the more you use, the more it costs. Same thing for the commercial, they're going to increase by a dollar each. We went down to the institutional rate, which is really just for the prison. We only have one institution here, and we're going to raise that minimum by $250 a month, and the per 1,000 by a dollar. On the institutional sewer rate that we have for the prison, we're going to leave that minimum the same, and I just wanted to raise the per 1,000 to $9, but they've cut back so much, they barely use the minimum, so that's not going to be a huge influence. But it does get it up to a point to where if they do start using over their 1.8 million gallon minimum, that it'll generate a little revenue. If we do implement these changes, it's estimated that this will probably bring in between $75,000 and $100,000. It depends on how much somebody uses. I did go back and pulled some comparison rates from different counties surrounding us just to look. And say Beaufort County, for instance, they have seven districts, they have seven different rates. Their minimum, where ours, if it went to the $26, their minimum for 2,000 gallon ranges from $29.40 all the way up to $38.40. It depends on which one of the seven districts you live in, and then their per 1,000 over that ranges from around $5.50 up to $6.53. But they kind of get you on that flat rate, because that flat rate's a guarantee. That per 1,000 over the flat rate really depends on how much an individual house uses. So when you're calculating increasing a raise, it's really hard to calculate what a proposed house is going to use. You're basing it really on the flat rate of what is a guarantee. So they kind of get you there on that flat rate being so high. I mean, theirs would be up to as high as $10 more a month than ours would be on their high side. I ended up looking at Washington County's water, and what they do, everybody charges, goes about it different. They have a monthly base rate for the size of a meter, where we have a residential and a commercial rate. They have it based on the size of a meter, so for a 3/4-inch residential rate, they would charge $24 for a 3/4-inch meter, $36 for a 1-inch, and it goes all the way up to an 8-inch meter that's $726. But for everybody across the board, they charge $13 per 1,000 gallons, where ours would be $7 per 1,000 gallons. So that's how they structured theirs as to based on what the institution would be, because here, even here in Hyde County, we have a lot of houses that have, residential houses that have 2-inch meters. So their base charge in Washington County would be $99 flat charge, and then it would be $13 per 1,000. So that's how they, that's just how they classify theirs. And Taro County is pretty much the same way. They charge, they charge a base fee for just having a meter, and then they don't have a 2,000 gallon minimum, minimum like us. For a 3/4-inch meter, it's $21.50, and then it's $7 per 1,000 gallons over that. And then it goes, that's just from 1,000 to 5,000 gallons, and then from 5,000 to 25, it jumps up to $10. And theirs, based on the size of the meter also. So I did a little quick comparison, because it's really not comparing apples to apples. It's kind of hard, it's really confusing. But if we took a residential household that had a 3/4-inch meter in Hyde County with the new proposed rate, it would be $26 for 2,000 gallons of water, minimum. Then it would be the per 1,000 over. But this, this would just be for the 2,000. So Washington County, it would be $24, Taro County would be $35.50. If you use 3,000 gallons in Hyde County, it would cost you $33, Washington County would be 37, Taro would be 42.50. 4,000 gallons would be $40 in Hyde County, $50 in Washington County, $49.50 in Taro. And 5,000 gallons, which is about an average water bill in Hyde County, would be $47. For us, $63 in Washington County, $56.50 in Taro County. So the more you use, the more they're charging, and the gap gets bigger from what our proposed to them.
What was that estimated increase in revenues that you received?
If we do adopt this, I'm estimating it would be between $75 and $100,000, and this should carry us way into the future, just like it did 12 years ago. And I will mention, too, one of the reasons we're here, I mean, the cost of everything is definitely skyrocketed. Our system's getting old. It's 29 years old, a lot of it. Some of it's older now, some of it's 50 years old in our distribution system. But the last two years, last year and the fiscal year that we're in now, it will be the first, the only two years that the enterprise fund has went in the negative hole. We went backwards last year, we had to use money from our front balance, where we had a huge water leak at the Intercoastal Waterway. It cost $162,000 to fix that. This year that we're in now, we had the Scranton Creek blowout. It was $124,000 to fix that. Coming in the near future, I know we have our elevated water tank at Ponzer that's going to need to be painted, some of our other ones, they're 10, 15-year projects, but they're coming up. I still have five creek crossings that's made out of the same pipe that we've been fixing one every year. And even before we done Intercoastal two years ago, we did Mill Creek, we did one up on Highway 45. They're all out of the same Dookla Line River crossing pipe that's just back, back when it came out in 91, you know, it was the thing to put across creek crossings, but now it just does not hold up. It's a ball joint, metal bolts, the bolts give away, the pipe blows apart, you cannot fix it underwater. So it's a whole new HDPE directional board to fix that, that should last for 100-plus years. They just didn't have that back then. So looking at me going in the hole for the last two years, and the projects that I can foresee coming up, you know, I feel like it's my job to present this, and nobody wants to raise anything by no means, and I know it's not economically the best time, but I feel like I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't at least talk to you guys about this and see how we feel. I feel like it's time to do it. I kept it as minimal as possible. I hope this will carry us into the future, and we can still be a sustainable department.
Is the goal to continue to just fix them, fix them when they blow out, or are you going to try to go ahead and replace some of those spots?
We've been fixing them as they go. You know, some of them may last 10 more years, and one may blow out tonight, so it, we only had, we've used, last year we used over 200,000 out of our fund balance. This year, we're going to use about 168,000 out of our fund balance. We only had about 1.3 million in a fund balance, so we're getting close to being below a million, which makes me nervous as to the amount of assets that we have out there.
How about the paint of the towers, or are they, one of them in your budget this year? Did that take several years?
No. I'm hoping to get at least one to two more years out of Ponzer, and it'll, it'll have to be done inside and out. We got a grant years ago to do all of the other ones inside and out. They probably just need a little bit of spot painting on the outside, the inside should be fine. So, but as grant money comes available, we're always looking for it to do things like this, but the grant money is just far between.
Hurricane washed it away.
Yeah. Yeah. If one were blowed down, you know, it might be a blessing, but knock on wood, I don't think that's going to happen, and I hope it don't happen.
Clint had meticulously mapped out all the roads in the state, and knew which ones were eligible under current state funding to add to our water system, and we pretty much chipped away at every single eligible road for state funding, and I think that now we've pretty much got every county road in the state, in the county covered that's eligible for grant funding.
Yeah, we ran out of eligibility for those, and if you guys remember, it's probably been two years ago now, the way time flies, we put in four roads ourselves, me and my staff, and paid for it, to put in four water mains in just unserved areas. So as we go through this, and this is generating funds, if we can get by a year without having a water leak, and we wind up having a surplus of money in, I'm not looking to put everything in a bank account and have a fat bank account. We want to serve the community. We'll be right back out choosing another road to put a water line down. And we do, we have a list. There's 67 roads and named roads in Hyde County that currently does not have water down it. It's 77 miles of pipeline. So it's a lot. But when you see those roads, it's five miles before you get to the first house, so you could typically see why that area's not served. But, I mean, my goal when I first became utilities manager was to get all those areas served, but with lack of funds, that's not going to happen, because I don't have but a few years left.
Do I hear a motion to approve the water rate increase?
Yes.
Have a motion by Commissioner Simmons, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Swindell. Is there any discussion with the board?
And on that, if we could, if we could just make this effective as of July 1, would be perfect. That's what we were going to try to do.
Effective July 1?
Yes, sir.
Have you applied for?
And this is actually reflective in your budget that you received this evening. These changes are reflective in your proposed budget.
Have you applied for the Clean Water grant?
They have no grants, they have loans, they have loans only right now.
Yeah, what name?
Clean Water Trust Fund. They have no grants available, it's loans only.
Well, I remember Craig McConaughey just got one, a $15 million grant.
It was, it was not a, it was not a grant, it was a loan.
Well, it's a grant.
It might have been like a real small portion of it, but...
It's a $15 million grant to upgrade the water system.
Yeah, no, it's not a grant. If it was a grant, we'd be, I would be applying for it. And we've done that in the past, that's what we built our water plants and stuff with.
But you don't know, you're just saying it was a loan. You don't know it to be a fact.
I know it to be a fact. It's not a grant, I can tell you.
Now Clean Water Trust Fund and also USDA only do grant loan combinations.
Well, right now in Hyde County, a lot of houses are empty for the bulk of the year, and you probably know that as well, a lot of them. The hunters got their little cabins here, and they might come in once every two months. And then we've got people that run the bed and breakfast, and they might have guests one weekend, you don't never know. And I notice a lot of going on, and I, I don't feel good about imposing, and you know that, you know how I feel about that, any rates, you know, more money on the citizens of Hyde County when they already are not getting anything. And to add a bill on to them, I'm totally against it. I mean, that's the way I see it.
According, according to the North Carolina School of Government, higher water rates are not necessarily bad. Higher water rates often do not necessarily reflect poor or inefficient management. In fact, data shows that utility companies with low rates do not generate the sufficient revenue to properly maintain their systems' assets.
Is there any more discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of increasing the water rate increase, let it be known, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
That's four, four and one against. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clint.
And I would like to say, as your manager, that I am so happy to have somebody like Clint Berry running our utilities department. Clint is, he has the most efficient department, I would say, in the entire county. He is always very diligent, and he, as a public utilities director, he makes my job a lot easier. I'm proud of the system that he's been able to build and maintain, and Clint, we really appreciate you.
Good water.
Yes, thank you for that good clean water, because we do have some of the best tasting drinking water of anywhere I've ever been, and we appreciate that, sir. Next is Contract for Services Land Records Audit. In an effort to achieve the most accurate county land records, I am recommending an audit of our county tax records and resolution of errors as are necessary. This project will include a review of the land records processes, including document transfers, land title ownership, or land surveying issues, and submitting a plan to improve those processes, particularly in regard to FARRAGET. So when we implemented FARRAGET, we knew our goal was to make sure that we had the most accurate tax records possible. And this audit will be an audit to look at any issues that we have, and resolve them, and make it better, the process between a land transfer occurring in the Register of Deeds, and how that gets communicated to the tax office, and how improvements through inspections gets improved, gets reported to the tax office. I have selected a contractor, and they are a real property appraiser. They hold a Department of Revenue Certificate for appraisal of property for ad valorem purposes. The contractor is additionally certified through the International Association of Assessing Officers, and has a graduate certificate in GIS from NC State. This contractor is familiar with Hyde County. She was a member of the project team that did our Hyde County 2017 reevaluation, and the work will be a special project. The contractor will report to the county manager and will be supervised by the county manager. A final report will be submitted to this board upon project completion, and the term of the contract is three months. Happy to answer any questions.
I think this is a great idea. The only thing I would ask, again, I don't know if there's a way to do it, but all these, I know that I run into it with some of the properties I have, like you have five different tax cars for one piece of real estate. And I don't know if in this process, or in the future, if there's a way to consolidate that stuff and, and make it one tax deal, because I think that's where we'll get a lot of confusion, is when you, there's stuff that's been, had a separate tax deal for 100 years. Anyway, I don't know if this has anything to do with it, but somehow consolidating some of that stuff, I think would let, let the landowner and the tax office know where things are a little bit better, so. And I'm for this 100%. I just want to make sure that that person is just totally focused on this project and gets it done, because then it's something that this county needs greatly, in my opinion, is, you know, to update. I guess would they, this also help update the GIS?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's all integrated, and you're spot on with the type of improvements we're looking to create. That is exactly one of the examples we would be looking for in the audit, and we would be resolving through the process.
I know I had a meeting the other day with two large landowners, the Fairville community, and they're like, we paid our taxes, but we have no idea what we paid them for. And, and, and so just trying to get that stuff cleaned up and, and all, and I hate to hear that Justin's leaving, but, but this is, this is a must.
It was spot on. I had this in mind prior to Justin's departure, and I had hoped that Justin would be able to train this person. Justin had been, quite frankly, stretched thin with the hurricane recovery efforts, and so I'd gotten somebody on board to do this work, and had hoped Justin would be able to walk them through it, but I feel really good that this will be a really great project and address some of the issues we've been struggling with.
Do I hear a motion to approve the Contract for Services for Land Records Audit?
Proven.
Have a motion by Commissioner Simmons, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Swindell. Is any more discussion?
Yes, a question. Will this pick up those errors in mailing addresses that we've been struggling with?
I think that that can be part of our scope of work. Tom, Donnie, if you can remember to work with her on that. Donnie has by default, being one of my most talented persons, people using the new FARRAGET system, has inherited a lot of new work. And so if we could work with her on that, and I'm glad that you spoke up, Tom, because I wanted to let you know that this work is not just primarily for mainland properties. We will also be just as diligently focused on the island and trying to resolve, and hopefully, after we get her here and get some of her work behind her belt, we'll have some public days on the island that will advertise where folks can come out and work through their tax records with. and work through their tax records with the contractor while we've got our own staff.
That would be great, as you, as you know, we've been dealing with a problem where people were not receiving tax bills for reasons of, you know, having the wrong mailing address attached to them, including even as, as wrong as them going to an entirely different county. And, and then having to pay penalties for not getting their taxes paid on time. And that's really something that we need to clear, to clear up. And, and it shouldn't have to be that it's a problem that comes to the attention of our tax department because there's a problem, which is what we've been doing, is we haven't been able to correct those until they're brought to the attention of the tax department. So that I, I hope this audit will catch all of those kinds of problems.
Donnie, do you have any feedback on that particular issue?
The problem catching things like mailing addresses is, I don't know what your mailing address is. I know you own this piece of property and it's on this piece of land, but I don't know where you receive your mail. So aside from having it being returned to sender to the tax office and having the tax office mark it as not a correct address, unless the taxpayer tells us what their mailing address is, we can't really guess that.
But, but one of the, the way, one of the places that we have looked for improvement, so Tom, Donnie's saying that that's not something where we could generate a report and find all the mistakes and correct them. But what we do run into is we have taxpayers that call and they do give us the new address and sometimes that data record is still not updated. And we have, I'd say um, quite a bit of information that needs to be, we have a quite a bit of paper requests for updates to their information that have not been put into the Farragut system. So while it won't catch all of the address changes, if a taxpayer does call and say that this is the wrong address, there will be a mechanism to get those things changed. So this won't be the wherewithal and be all for everything, but it's as sure as a good start.
Well, I certainly would hope that taxpayers who, that have provided the information that the tax department needs, but they're still not receiving their tax bills because they're going to Madiyo or over to Dare County somewhere. Uh, I, I know of cases where those people have had to pay penalties and the response from the tax department has been that it's their responsibility to pay their taxes even if the tax department mails their bill to the wrong address. And uh, I just think that's wrong and that we have a responsibility to get those addresses corrected.
This will be a really good step in the right direction. I say it might not fix everything automatically in the initial three month period, but it's a heck of a great start towards moving towards what we envisioned.
Very happy to see this, very happy to see this going, thank you.
Email also, I think we need to be, we need to be emailing tax bills.
Well, I tell you, that was another thing, Donnie, our new Farragut system allows us to take in emails and phone numbers. We've never recorded taxpayers' phone numbers before, it was just their mailing address. So Farragut allows us to get all that information from a person in that record where we can reach out to them through email or give them a call if there's a problem with their record. So we have so much more capacity with Farragut and we are not utilizing it to the best of its capability. We've got a lot more work we can do with that system.
Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor of contract services land record audit, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
Ms. Corrine, would you like to present the Ocrac occupancy tax board recommendations and the mainland occupancy tax recommendations and the spending freeze?
You want my book? The Ocrac occupancy tax board met last week and those are the recommendations that they have for fiscal year twenty twenty-one set forth in front of you. And they are asking that you adopt those recommendations for their budgeted occupancy tax forms for next fiscal year.
Mr. Paul, do you have anything to add um, in regard to those recommendations?
Yeah, I, I do, um, first off, I'm, I'll make that as a motion. And maybe we have to wait for a second before I comment now that I made a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Paul, a second by Commissioner Simmons, now is any discussion?
Thank you. Yeah, uh, the occupancy tax board met and uh, just want to thank that board for their hard work and for, for doing the job that they do, it's not an easy job. They have to make a lot of hard choices and uh, they do a, a really great job of it and I'm grateful for that. I'd like to point out um, just a few things on that list. I think are indicative of uh, the community of Ocracoke's willingness to, to reach out a little bit beyond just um, those uh, kind of typically nonprofit organizations that benefit the community, but sort of reaching a little bit deeper into Hyde County and providing support uh, for the county as a whole. In particular, the allocation to Matty Arts Center. The allocation to Ocracoke School, that's forty, that's fourteen thousand, almost fifteen thousand dollars to support Ocracoke School coming out of the occupancy tax. And um, the Hyde County Sheriff's Department, that's a, uh, going to be for more of those signs that are um, for speed limit um, signs. But it, it's a way that, that the community and that the occupancy tax board is reaching a little bit deeper into Hyde County and trying to provide support uh, in, in ways that quite honestly, take a little bit of pressure off of the county budget. And I just want to point that out and uh, thank the board for, for those recommendations.
Is there any more discussion?
I, I would like to um, to say what, how appreciative I was to see the OT board work so closely with the TDA board as well. The OT board had quite a healthy um, reserve balance and with the TDA board being so new, some of the things that they, projects they wanted to work on, they didn't have the funds to do that and it's been really great to see those two boards come together and cooperate to try to meet those project goals. So I just have a great deal of respect for members of, of both the OT board and the TDA board.
Sure, I'd like to second that and I, and I would also just want to point out that the, the reason that there is a reserve from the OT board is that you, you might be thinking, wow, that doesn't really make sense given what we've been through with Hurricane Dorian and COVID. But uh, the reason that the board had these kind of funds to allocate um, for this round of uh, budgeting is because so many projects that they had budgeted for last year were not able to be completed because of uh, Hurricane Dorian. And so uh, there was substantial amount of money was returned uh, back to the OT board. And so they reallocated it this time. And just fair warning, I don't think we can count on this level of allocation uh, for a year from now.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of the uh, main, uh, Ocrac occupancy tax board budget recommendation, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carry.
Ms. Gibbs, mainland occupancy tax?
The next tab is your mainland occupancy tax board recommendations for the board accounting commissioners. They have two small allocations that they would like to give this year, which is outlined in your email. And they're asking that you would refer those to for the twenty twenty-one year.
Do I hear a motion to approve the mainland occupancy tax, uh, budget recommendations?
That's the Matty Arts stuff, that's right here, right?
Yes, sir. I worked at the post office and now I'm not right here, they moved.
They've taken a really huge role in tourism promotion, I'd say they're probably our most active uh, entity now doing tourism promotion in the county. They actually received Ocracoke occupancy tax money as well, so um, we were pretty um, happy with the growth that Matty Arts has made as far as promoting tourism in Hyde County.
Have a motion by Commissioner Simmons, are here a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Swindell, is there any more discussion?
I guess, are they going to build that fire station like in the, that like funding over time that they're going to save or?
Yes, sir.
Satellite station?
Yes, sir, the project timeline um, goes out for, beyond this current fiscal year. And that money that'll be appropriated will start them on the equipment funding that they'll need to go forward. They have USDA grant loan combination funding for the actual um, construction of the building. But that particular um, occupancy tax money will be utilized to help them begin the fund that they need for the equipment that'll go in the building. And we felt that since the addition of that station in the Lake Comfort area would benefit the entire mainland by providing mutual aid to our other fire departments, that it was a valid countywide project.
Any further discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carry.
Ms. Gibbs, how about number seven, the spending freeze?
We are at the end of the year, I come before y'all every year around this time to ask that you implement a spending freeze on unnecessary purchases. That can be held over until a further date.
We do that every year, we um, only issue, we only, can you spend up to a hundred dollars?
Before you have to get a purchase order.
Before you have to get a purchase order and of course, if it's absolutely necessary, we will carry forward with it, but it's, helps us close out our books.
Have a motion to approve the spending freeze by Commissioner Simmons, are here a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Swindell, is there any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
Last item under your items of consideration is the CARES Act grant offer. You've heard me talk about the CARES Act several times today and the CARES Act is the money that is funded from the federal government down to the state government for um, COVID-related expenditures. We've had an appropriation that's came down for general county obligations. But this particular bunch of, um, this particular group of CARES Act money is a grant offer just for our airport in the amount of twenty thousand dollars and it'll be utilized to offset our operating expenditures to our airport. All municipal airports in the state received an allocation and it was based on population and I'm asking you all to accept uh, the grant offer of twenty thousand dollars to the Hyde County Airport for COVID um, operating expenses.
Have a motion by Commissioner Simmons, are here a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Swindell, is there any discussion?
Yes, I, I noticed there was also an allocation to the Ocracoke Airport, will that go through the Park Service?
Yes, sir, it will, as the sponsor, we're considered the sponsor of the Englehard Airport. So um, I would assume that the National Park Service would be the sponsor of the Ocracoke Airport, so.
Good, thank you.
Any further discussion? No, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carry.
Um, I also tell you, there is a similar act right, uh, bill right now that has uh, left the House and headed to the Senate that will propose, that proposes to give us similar funding in regard to elections um, in a greater amount. And so hopefully if that uh, will go passed through the Senate, we could receive some more CARES Act money moving forward to help us with our revenues.
We have uh, several budget uh, matters, transfers, for some different departments and I don't believe any of them increase our budget.
Um, there there is some in DSS, but they're already um, funded. I think, no, not this one, I'm trying to click through all of them. No, these are all, these are all not increasing the budget at all, there's complete transfers, it makes an interest. They cover costs.
They're just transfers.
They're just trees.
Yes. No increase in budget. All right, do I hear a motion to approve the budget matters?
So move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Swindell and second by Commissioner Simmons, is there any discussion? No, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carry. Right, it's time for management reports. Mr. Topps, would you like to start?
No, go ahead, go ahead. All right, I'll start, um, I want to start with a touchy situation. I want to discuss race relations. I consider, Commissioner Topps, do you consider me to be your friend and that we've looked out for each other throughout our families throughout time, is that right?
I would think so, I hope so.
And just like you were talking about Justin Gibbs earlier, the family relations, my whole life, Lee Dale Gray's family has been part of my family, I, I consider that. And I look at what happened to uh, Mr. Floyd as horrendous. But also when things were getting broke, I see that as horrendous. I think there's a time that we need to come together as a community and family and we need to look at what we really have and can accomplish together. When my granny died, we were going through pictures and I got a bunch of pictures. And in those pictures, those pictures of Lee Dale Gray's, my granddaddy, um, uh, Tom Hardy and different ones, and Walter Jones, cooking a pig, raising money to get the rescue squad for Fairfield. That was a community effort, didn't matter about the color, it mattered about family. And that rescue squad picked up whoever was sick in Fairfield, and it does today. I don't think anybody looked at that video and didn't, wasn't totally outraged. I just, I just hope as a county and a state and a country, we can come back together and we can accomplish so much together than we can being divisive. And uh, and again, when we yell and scream at each other, we don't accomplish nothing when we can work together and we talk about things, we can get a lot accomplished, so, just like getting the first rescue squad in Fairfield. That's how it was accomplished. I think it was the first one in the county, if I'm not, is that correct, Earl, do you remember? Commissioner Topps, do you remember?
A long time ago.
That's been, that was a long time ago. But anyway, in that, in that, but also just like that, they, they raised money through having band jams and just the community bought that, the fed, the federal government didn't buy, the community bought it. And so I just think that uh, that's something we really need to look at, that, that, we need to look at our community. I think if we watch the federal news or the national news every night, we're all going to hate each other when we get up in the mornings, but I think if we all look at the reality of, of the impact that each other have had on our lives together as a community, we'll see that we can get a lot further together. The next thing I wanted to discuss is um, the trawler lawsuit. From what I understand, the CCA or something has gone about filing a lawsuit against the uh, trawl boat companies and different things around. I don't know what the details of that are. I do know that we don't need to lose our commercial fishermen. We've already let do the sea turtles, they do away with gill netting here during, in Swan Quarter during the summer, which was a large income to uh, a lot of our local fishermen that didn't have a hundred-foot boat. They could carry a skiff out here, make a couple thousand dollars a week and uh, and it would go. Anyway, they can make a living, but of course, we've let the government take that from us also. I think we listened to this guy tonight, Mr. Peterson, he talked about mental health of people where they've lost their jobs, their substance, or that, that's of people, where they've lost their jobs, their substance, well, that's gonna be what we're gonna get, you know, we've totally destroyed an economy that was really good, there's a lot of people that are, have lost jobs and don't know where to turn, and my personal feeling is we need to get things back to normal as quick as possible to save what jobs can be saved, because the way a person is really free is he can make enough money to provide for himself. If every time we gotta ask Mr. Government to send us to the doctor to buy our food, well, in my opinion, that's not freedom. Next thing is that we need to try to get figured out, as I was called about this this week, was the duck blind law, I don't know where we're at on that, I don't know where that group is, but we need to try to get that finalized. The other thing I was thinking about while we're discussing all this today, can we have a Hyde County duck stamp? Where you have to have a duck stamp in Hyde County to be able to duck in, I don't know if that's a way to produce revenue or not. That was a thought I had during this conversation tonight. And the last thing I want to end with, which I always do, is J.W. Spencer, we put in a 1,200-acre drainage district right down the road here, J.W. Spencer took a wonderful video of his green beans that are inside that district totally dry. He panned across the road and there's corn that's eight inches to a foot tall underwater, just showing the absolute need for protection from these drainage districts and all and set up, and I would be willing to bet that all the houses that are located in there, I bet their separate systems work a lot better, and I guess, I bet everything else is working really good. Commissioner Toppin, have you been down that road, is it pretty evident where that district is? Yeah, and so I just want to end with that, I think that's a, I think J.W.'s maybe shared that with some people, I think that's a video that we need to get out and show the needs that we have here for drainage and fight that through. I guess that's it, I hope I said everything I meant to say properly.
Kind of mirrors somewhat, touched on a couple points he did, as a trawler owner, I took part in a marine fisheries phone survey, and he asked me about turtle extruder devices and mic catch reduction devices, and it was really, really good conversation, but what people don't realize is that if we lose the PAMCO sound and have it designated as a secondary nursery system where we can't trawl, that also moves the setbacks for construction from 50 feet from that water line to, I believe, 175 feet, and that's not really publicized. So that take, basically takes care of a lot of our, any of our waterfront development in Hyde County, I mean, that really restricts, unless you've got a huge piece of property, you're now three times as far away from the water, so people need to be aware of that. Had this conversation with a young farmer about expanding some of these drainage districts or starting new ones, just we're seeing these catastrophic events at the onset of crops, and the lifeblood of Hyde County is definitely agriculture, commercial fishing, so both of those have been on the line, either legislatively or through weather events. And I'm glad to see some people coming back into the county, it's, we see a lot of, lot of visitors, a lot of fishermen, you know, good tourism traffic, ferry traffic, Ocracoke, I just, all that's positive, and that just hopefully will help offset some of the negative we faced over the last six to seven months.
Mr. Toppin, you ready?
Yeah. First, I think I need to let you guys know that the mosquito spray is moving forward, I've talked with Senator Steinberg, Assistant Ed, and he's looking for the funds, and hopefully by July, around first of July, we should be able to hopefully get some funds in so we can administer the program, and supposedly administer through the Health Department, but anyway, that looks good. I get a lot of calls, and they're not bad calls, but I think people don't understand that sometimes we all get frustrated, and it seems to me that they feel that I'm not being treated fairly, I've spoken to fairly on the board, I'm not even being considered for some of the things that I brought forward. But like I told them about in the last meeting, I think Mr. Simmons, he, if you know him, you know he just gets a little loud sometimes, but a lot of people don't know that, and they wonder why was he speaking to me in that tone of voice, when I just asked him a couple questions? Well, that's the way life is, everybody don't talk the same. He apologized if he offended me, and I accepted it. I've had eyes rolled at me, you know, I have, everything I say has been rebutted, bringing out the negativity in it, but that's okay. I'm not gonna lower my standards the way I was raised for nobody else. I'm not gonna do that, but you guys don't have anything to worry about me, I'm gonna stand up for you regardless. The next thing I need to say to you is, I, we have a lady that works EMS up there, the ESS, and I got this article, and I thought it was outstanding, Ms. Dea Moni, I don't know, y'all get the book, and you read what they were saying, and I thought it was something that needed to be mentioned or recognized, and if you see her, I'll give her a call and thank her for the service that she has given Hyde County. This lady's been here a long time, and she paid her dues, and she's still working, and she needed to be thanked for that. Give a call and thank her for serving herself faithfully in the EMS. The next thing I want you guys to consider doing is having a silent prayer when you get home for the Floyd family when they're committing, with the unrest going on throughout the world, not just in the United States, or North Carolina, or Minnesota, or New York, it's all over the world, that is protesting, marching in Europe, everywhere. And say a prayer for the country and the Floyd family, and let's see if we can, sure that Hyde County can stand up and get to talk with somebody about it, you know, if that's your concern. And that's all I want.
Thanks, sir. Tom, you got your report?
Sure, thanks. One of the things that I've always really felt is important about local government, and in a lot of ways, we really ought to be the model for what goes on at the state and federal level, because we can have these kinds of conversations, and I'm not certain they can at the state and federal level, because they focus on, you know, there's, there's bigger issues, there's bigger money, there's a lot of pressure on those people to deal with issues in a way that overlooks the human qualities of the decisions that they make and of the, and of the issues that we're addressing. And at the local level, we can work together, we can sit side by side, we can put together, we can, we can put aside our political differences and work for the, for the benefit of our county, and I think that's a great thing. I also think, though, that we need to, in the context of the issues that we're addressing right now and in the nation and racial discrimination issues, I think we're making a mistake if we don't look that squarely in the eye and call it what it is, and may not, I don't want that stuff to go on, and I know nobody here wants it to go on, but we need to, we need to be clear about what that was, that wasn't just one bad guy put his knee on somebody's neck, that was a white guy in a powerful position who crushed the life out of a black guy, and if we don't recognize what that means, then we're not facing the reality. But back to local, back to local issues, and I, and I, and I really am glad that we get to address these local issues as a group and that we can work together on these things. The opening, the reopening of Ocracoke following the COVID shutdown is going forward, and I would just like to say that a couple of things that I think we could do a little better than we're doing, one is we're distributing a flyer that came out through the Health Department, and I heard again today that it's not getting distributed, and I raised that issue last week and the week before, and we gotta make sure that flyer gets distributed, that's an important piece of information that's supposed to be handed out to every single car that comes onto the island so that they understand the issues that we're dealing with. This is a very compact community here, and so far, as far as we know, there aren't any positive cases on the island, but we need people to understand that we're asking them to participate when they come to visit Ocracoke, we're asking them to participate as a community in what we're trying to accomplish here. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to protect our citizens, residents of Ocracoke, and in particular, to protect the workers that are, are there taking orders at the restaurants and handing out food at the, in the, to go, places that are doing to-go food and working in the grocery store, those people are at serious risk, and if you don't wear a mask, then you're putting them at further risk, and there's no need to do that, it's not a political issue whether you wear a mask or not, it's a courtesy, it's a simple courtesy, and, and it's, and it's protecting the life of our workers and of the people on the island, and we're only asking that you cooperate with that, and we need to get that information out, and those flyers need to be handed out to every car that comes to the island. Another issue that we're facing is the, at the state level, the budget problems that we're having here, they're also sharing to, in greater degree at the state level, and one of those issues is the Department of Transportation budget, which there's, much of their revenue was derived from the gasoline tax, both federal and state, and of course, that just dropped off the cliff, and so between that and other fiscal problems at the state level, our ferry division and Ocracoke's dependence on an operating ferry system is very much at risk, and so I'm asking people, the commissioners and staff people who, who work with us in county government and the people of Ocracoke to look closely at these problems and start to communicate with your state legislators about the importance of continued funding of the ferry service to Ocracoke. So that's it, and we're all working together in unprecedented difficult times, and I appreciate being a part of this community, and I appreciate being a part of this board, thank you.
Mr. Toppin was talking about Dea in her article, I thought Dea Day, wasn't about that, I hadn't picked up one of the books, but she was telling me about the article that she had some quotes in about EMS and about Hyde County, and I did thank her for what she does as EMS, representing the county the way they do it, you know, they, they work under some pretty hard, terrible conditions at times, especially right now with this coronavirus going on, so I'm going to read it as soon as I figure out one of those books, it's good to have people that do build the county up, especially Ring Paul, he's, would like to thank Dea for that too. Had several telephone meetings this week, one with Trigium, which Dave Peterson did very good, you know, Trigium is doing a tremendous job to write the eastern part of the state with their, their mental health and disability stuff, and they work very closely with the Health Department here in Hyde County, it's a very, it's just a tremendous organization. Also had a, I was on the phone with Admiral Commission, had a five-hour telephone conference with them this week, two o'clock to seven o'clock, with the executive director, resigned several, back three or four months ago, and we had interviews on, through teleconference and to interview three people, and then we had a meeting, and so, you know, we're getting ready to hire a new director, and the Admiral Commission is still working, their, most of their employees are working from home like they are in a lot of places, but some of them go into office on a rotated basis, and they're continuing the workforce development and the, and the meals on wheels or home-delivered meals, there's been a tremendous jump in home-delivered meals since this coronavirus, because they're not, they were serving the Congress meals at the senior centers, but they're, they're getting a lot more requests for home-delivered meals, and they're stepping up to play, I think they just got a $500,000 grant to shore that program up for the rest of the year, there's a lot going on there with Admiral Commission, and I have been to Ocracoke the last couple weekends, and things are not like they were, but just things are growing, and people are coming, and some of the businesses are open, so it's looking promising, it's probably not gonna be as good a year as they have had, but at least they're open for business, things are going along, so that's my report. Chris?
Can I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
Also in that book, what would have been, I guess, my great uncle, he's attributed, or they speak of him in there, and he died in the line of duty as a Hyde County deputy, I think it was in 1977, he had a heart attack while making a rest, and, and so like you say, you know, we also have police officers that lose, that we need to remember also that are out there, and not all police officers are bad, and we have had some here in this county that made an ultimate sacrifice, so, and he left a son at the time in high school, and so anyway, I just, I just in that same book, if y'all pick it up, Dennis Simmons is in there, and I think there was another gentleman by the name of Archie Wayhave, I think was in there also, which was a Hyde County deputy, that they both died within one month of each other in the line of duty, I think both of them had a heart attack, but anyway.
Chris?
Tonight I gave you my budget message, we are working diligently as the revenues are coming down the pipeline from federal and state legislation, staying abreast of those revenues and trying to get those captured into our budget and cover our shortfalls. We have had some significant staff changing, staff changes here, which we've been busy trying to refine our team. We reopened our county offices today, we actually did a bit of a practice run Friday, we opened without telling anybody Friday, just to make sure we had all the supplies that we needed and processes in place, it went well, and today we officially opened. We've got Plexiglas in some offices and reminders about safe distancing, and we have our first session of court Wednesday, and through the court session beginning Wednesday, we received a directive from Superior Court Judge Wayland Sermons dictating some of the precautions that we would provide for court. Court will be divided into two sessions, when there'll be more than 20 per session, so there can be adequate social distancing, and the county will provide hand sanitizing stations both downstairs and upstairs during court, along with cleaning of any high contact areas in association with court. I think his directive- I think his directive came down last Wednesday, and we had a little less than a week to get all that in place, and we've worked diligently with our clerk of court to get those things in place. And other than that, I hear what you gentlemen say. I'm taking note of the issue with the shrimping and do plan on following up with that, and appreciate all your support, and I will see you next Tuesday, June the 9th, at 10:00 a.m. in this room for a budget workshop.
Okay, is there any other comments? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Swindell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.